All right, time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the repeller for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, and I'll officially call to order the Fergus Falls Public Schools School Board meeting. And the first item of business is to establish our form.
Ms. Hermes?
Present.
Matt Leckie here. Steve Vigasson here. Natalie Cole?
Here.
Clay Daniels in here. Natalie Kunsen?
Here. Very good, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? A second? Second. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The agenda is approved. And then we'll launch right into our reports and correspondence. I will start alphabetically to indicate that Special Ed Cooperative hasn't met since I last reported. That meeting is today. For Region 1, we had our monthly meeting at the end of July. Reviewed the audit for that school district that provides technology services. And the audit was, the final results aren't in, but all indicators are that it went without any blemish, with any problems. We reviewed our budget for last year, and we stayed on track, very consistent with projections in that entity. We did a reorganizational format to establish dates and times for meetings and all the details therein. And just talked about utilization services and staffing and that type of thing. So, nothing extraordinary there. And then for negotiations, I do not have anything to report. So that wraps me up. Ms. Yee?
Okay, the Curriculum Review Committee won't meet again until October, so I don't have a report on that. And then Legislative Liaison, there's so much. I just got back from the Minnesota School Board Association Convention. So I'll try to write up something and have more to report then. But one of the things they spoke a lot about was the new ESSA Act, the Every Student Succeeds Act. And there is a meeting in Moorhead on the 21st of August. If people want to go and make a comment on that. Or there's also, if you go to the Minnesota Department of Education website, there's an online public comment survey that people can do.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Yee? Okay, Natalie?
Neither policy or wellness committee has met, so I don't have any report.
Okay. What?
Meetings confirmed, nothing there. Buildings and grounds, people have been driving by the school out here. They'll notice the playground is done and complete, the matting is in, and it looks really good down there. I've noticed a lot of kids down there playing already when I've gone by. So people have not had a chance to take a drive-by and walk down and look at it. It turned out really good. As far as the other thing with buildings and grounds, the work for the shed has started and in place. And I'm not quite sure where we're at right now. Mark can maybe follow up on that too. But I know things are going along. I think they'll probably wrap up or get going a little bit more here in the next week or so. So probably start seeing a little more action down there on that too. And then for the 544, we met last Thursday. New member update, they're up to 444. They gained 20 since the last time. A lot of that was contributed to the Legends Golf Tournament, which they had on the 21st. They had quite a few people there, so they gained some of those and just some people that were at that. They had 21 teams this year for that, so that was a good showing. I think it was up one team from last year, they had 20 last year. So raised a few dollars for the 544, and despite the hot humid weather that day, they said they had a good time. So, and then a couple other things coming up. September 8th, an Otter Pride Night. The 544 group will be serving taco in a bag up in the corridor of the east end of the gym. And so I think it's $5 for taco in a bag, a drink, banana, something like that. And then also just for people to keep in mind, Hall of Fame Weekend Inductions for Distinguished Alumni. That's going to be in conjunction with Homecoming this year. And so just kind of put that on your calendars and be looking forward to that. There'll be some more information coming on that. So that's what I have.
All right, any questions?
Just a couple of things to add. You asked about the building. The foundation work is, for the most part, done right now. They're doing some insulation. I assume that once the foundation is done, then the rest of the building will just go up very quickly. They're expecting it to be done the first or second, probably the second week of September. But I'm hoping for the first week of September. And then one project he didn't touch on was the electrical project. We're pretty much done with that. Just to let you know, one of the transformers we took out of the building basically fell apart as they were taken out. So we got our money's worth. It lived right to the very last second.
And I noticed several text alerts come out about fire alarm testing. And do you anticipate that's all?
Yeah, we had one more test that we were supposed to have on Friday. That didn't happen because parts didn't come in. But otherwise, yeah, it's been the summertime fun that we have, getting the building up and ready.
Very good.
Yep.
All right, Steve Vigasson?
Staff Development did not meet, so I don't have anything to give a report on that.
Okay, very well. Matt Leckie?
Minnesota High School League did meet on August 8th, but they haven't brought out their synopsis yet. So important in September, they don't meet again until October. Lakes Country Service Co-op Board, I think the biggest, well, there's a couple of things. With the Level 4 Special Education, they continue to work to finalize all the staff that they're going to be working there and stuff like that. So they have been very busily working, and they feel that it's coming together really nicely. So they're, I think, like anything, when you're starting out a new program and stuff, there's always some hiccups that go away. But I think they've worked through those quite well. Just following up on ESSA is the Regional Center of Excellence. And they have, one of the things with ESSA is that they let the co-ops, each co-op is part of ESSA in the sense of being a resource for people that, for schools that are underperforming. They've hired on expertise people to help them do some collaboration, do best practices and stuff like that, so they can help improve their test scores. At least be a little bit more, get a little more information on the test scores now. So that's part of the ESSA program. And then the other thing that I would say for Lakes Country Service Co-op, that's a big change, is the healthcare. And that as a board, we went ahead and approved a joint powers. One of the things that Lakes Country Service Co-op and all the co-ops are doing here is looking to become one of the equal. And that'll be a process. And one of the things that their hope is by doing this is that, again, it will allow them to be able to compete in the healthcare market. It's just getting a lot more competitive. And for Lakes Country Service Co-op to survive, they feel, and cooperatives in general, that they feel that they're going to have to go into one big state pool, which again should help draw down some of those administrative costs and stuff like that, which should ultimately affect premiums and make us be able to compete against competition.
And they think there's a pretty good shot at that?
Well, it's, I think if you're looking, you know, one of the things is to always be looking forward. And like they said, because of the market and what's happening, is if they don't go in this way, they feel that the cooperative and being able to provide healthcare is going to become less viable as time goes on, just because of the nature of healthcare and competition with it.
Yeah, good luck trying to predict that.
Yeah. But some of the things, like I said, for cost-wise and stuff, because instead of having each co-op have their own administrative costs, it'd be one big, you know, so it just helps in some of that stuff. So we'll see.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for Matt? Superintendent Yee?
Yes, just a follow-up on Ms. Yee and Matt. Just for the public, the ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, is the new version of NCLB. No Child Left Behind is now ESSA. So just so people have that. We have a number of trainings and things happening in August, probably more than we've ever had in recent memory. So the big one is Synergy. Synergy is the new power school. So we're training all of our staff over the next few weeks. And then on top of that, we open houses. We need to make sure parents are signing into Synergy and lots of different things there. So on August 23rd, we have a morning and afternoon session for staff. Also, on August 23rd is a big day. We have, we're training all of our mentors over at the Lakes Country Service Cooperative. St. Cloud State University, a couple of staff members from there will be training our mentors, while the mentees are just going to be sitting here in this room and doing a number of trainings regarding our website, fergusotters.org. Where can they find all the information, technology? They'll meet with the EA, the FFEA. And then we're going to do a bus tour. So we're actually going to have every single new staff member that will be here on that day learn where all of our elementary buildings are. And we'll go up to the prairie, and we'll just do some of the highlights around Fergus Falls, so they get a good lay of the land. And then on the 24th, all of our mentors and mentees will work together for the day. They'll meet with the principals right away in the morning. And this is, I'll tell you, being able to hire so early like we did, and then having that June 5th day, and then a couple other days where all of our staff has come in, they've done their paperwork, and now they're concentrating on school. It was just invaluable to be able to have them come in and really feel comfortable. They, you know, traded phone numbers and emails and all that with their new person. So the idea is to have them very comfortable the first day of school and ready to go. So that's exciting. And then our follow-in service starts on August 28th, goes to the 31st. We have four days. The big day there for parents is Open House Night. And it's 5:00 to 7:00 in the evening is our elementary open houses. And 5:00 to 8:00 for Kennedy Secondary School. So look at the newsletter that was just sent out. There's tons of information. Can't stress enough that you need to read that newsletter. There's lots of have-to or should-do type things. And then of course, this is all getting ready for school starting on September 5th. So far, we have 25 new teachers coming in, 55-plus new employees total. So we've got a lot of new people to get inducted into our school system. As it's early morning, 7:30 in the morning right now, we have all kinds of kids walking in for activities. So school is really, in many ways, starting today. So when your fall sports start, boy, there, it's not long now. Then looking at new programs, so we have Synergy. Parents should also be looking at School Messenger. So we're trying a new messaging system that'll get a more broad range. It should get to more people, and that'll be in concert with Synergy. And then this last week, we have a Google Summit. We had a Google Summit. We had about 150 people from all over the state, a lot of from the area. Amazing things you could learn about Google and Google Docs and different things. And we're going to pilot in a program called Pair Deck. And what's really fun is you can do any presentation, and every, any staff member can do a PowerPoint, but it's called Presentation in Google. And you just, you open it up with this Pair Deck, and you can ask the student questions as you go and have them write on the screen. So you can have them working on a problem and give them A, B, C, D, or just fill in the blank type problems. And so they'll be able to, the teacher will be able to know who answered the question right, wrong, and they'll be able to flow through the, oh, we already know this, we can move quicker. Oh, we better slow down because they're not understanding this piece. So it's a great tool that we'll be giving a try. And then a lot of the, the biggest news, I think, for us is our test data. And overall, last, it was August 7th, I believe, a week ago today, the state released results. They were very disappointed in the state. The reading was stagnant, the math actually decreased, but not Fergus Falls. We, out of seven categories, grade levels, we increased in six of seven in math, seven of seven in reading, and two of three in science. So our district moved nicely forward, and we'll have a nice celebration day at our district meeting. So very proud of the work that our staff has done on their standards and their curriculum and their teaching. So a lot of this training that we've done over the last five years, the formative assessment, the differentiated instruction, the work on the standards, is really paying off. So we compare very, very well to our area schools. So good stuff, very, very, very happy.
That is good news.
Yep.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Jerry, what's the total number that we have for the mentor-mentees? Is it the full, all 25 new hires?
Oh, yes, yes. Different levels. So a very veteran teacher, so we have a couple that have, you know, 10-plus years of experience. We have what's called a buddy. Well, let's tour the building. You have any questions, you can ask them. We have about four or five of those. But then for the most part, we have, I think it's seven right out of school, so they get a full mentor. And then we have some that are in that two-to-six years experience. They get a little, they get a mentor, but it's not quite the full meal deal, if you will. But, so we have varying levels, but it's great. And they're really connecting and getting them going. The idea behind August 24th date is let's have them ready for that whole first week of school. Let's have their lesson plans down, their procedures, what they're doing with students, here's the schedule, and really lay out that first week of school so they're very, very comfortable. Then you worry about the next week after that. But that first few days are so important in a classroom, so, yep.
Good, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our general consent items. For consideration for approval in this segment are the minutes from our July 17th School Board meeting, and then our bills and treasuries report. And what do we have on that?
Yeah, so it's the beginning of the fiscal year. Mark and I chatted, this is the time of the year, there's lots of purchasing, lots of big projects, and textbooks, computers, so there was quite a bit of money going on. But we still have $4.95 million in the bank, so we're still sitting good.
All right. Very well. And then we have quite a bit of personnel activity. Superintendent?
Yes, we had a number of resignations, and this seems to be the time of year where if you've had a summer job, you say, well, I guess I'm going to stay in that job. So we've had five different support staff resignations that are listed there. And then I'm going to go to the next page. We have hires. John Goots is a new custodian. Bill DeMealy is a special ed parent. The following are special ed parents, Sarah Kimlick, Gwynne Butt, and Tyler Butt. So we have those hires. And then we have resignation. Melissa Fern, school counselor, is moving to Alexandria School District. And then Ally Nicholson will be a combination of RTI, middle school, ALC. We were able to combine those positions to create a full-time position. So recommend approval of these items.
All right, great. Is there someone who will make the motion for the general consent items?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the items? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. And we'll move on to old business. Second, review on the meal account policy, number 534. Is there a motion to approve that policy?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on it? Quick synopsis?
Mark, would you like, you wrote most of this policy here?
Yeah, it's just basically, a lot of it is just letting parents know that there are meal accounts and how to handle them, how we're going to notify them through text messaging and so forth. Being clear that the hand stamping is still an option that they can opt out of, and would be how it would affect certain grades, when those hand stamps would start. I believe we do three meals, we start with phone calls and so forth. And then with one meal remaining, that's when we start the hand stamps.
Yep, School Messenger will give a robo-call, if you will, and then we'll follow up. And Ally, why don't you pass that around along with that other staff? That goes with the peanut triology. So we have some signs and different things. This is an example of showing what, how we'll be doing that.
Great, good. Yeah, and I'd just stress too, with school year coming up, how important it is for parents to have the ability, the phone number into the school so we can communicate with them. If you're changing your phone number all the time, it's hard to get notice from the school that your kid's lunch count's out. So, so anyhow, all right. So policy on meal account, any other discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is, the hand stamp looks nice and cute. Very well. Thank you. New business. We reviewed our goals during our work session day, retreat day, and those have been distributed. Is there a motion to approve our 1718 Fergus Falls School District goals?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion on those?
I'd like to make a comment. And for a number of years now, we've used the world's best workforce goals. And it makes a lot of sense that the legislature has set a charge for each district. So the world's best workforce goals are making sure kids are ready for kindergarten, they're reading well by third grade, you're closing all achievement gaps, you're getting students ready for post-secondary, and you're graduating. In the past couple of years, we've added a communication goal. So what happens is you have the legislature approving these, which then goes to the school board, which will go to the building, which will go to the PLCs, which goes to the individual teacher. So the teachers will be, the first week of workshop, will be writing SMART goals to achieve the broader school board goals. Our goals aren't necessarily written as a SMART goal, but the building goals will be very specific on how much percentage do we want to increase. You know, we'll take a look at our current data, and then we'll increase, you know, trying to get closer to that 100% all the time. We always want to do all students in the sense that we want to achieve that. We know that's a very, very difficult task to be able to do that, but we're always striving to make sure all students are successful.
Very good. All right, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the new goals, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we'll have that distributed to the staff and continue to review those as the year goes through. Next is a revision of the wellness policy, number 533. This is an area we've discussed in our work session to add a peanut and tree nut guideline to the current wellness policy. Is there a motion to approve the revision of the wellness policy? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? I would note that during our work session, when we had, we had information made available to the board that I, for myself, I would say was enlightening, just how severe the reaction can be to a nut allergy. It's not fanciful. It's pretty significant stuff. And so it's with that information that we made this adjustment to the policy.
And even prior to you adjusting the policy, we, in our district meeting, we were already having our school nurse, Jen Cores, talk to staff about using epi-pens because it is a very serious thing. So it's life-threatening.
It should be noted that we're, you know, we're not saying that people can't bring nuts to school. It's what school is serving is nuts.
Correct. So our food service and our fax classes will be peanut and tree nut-free. And then, but also you see a, it's going around here, tables in each cafeteria will be labeled peanut or tree nut-free. And yes, we'll hold that up, we, nice sign there. And the idea behind that is just to make sure that students in their area have a peanut or tree nut-free zone that they can be safe in.
And as Jerry mentioned earlier, in regard to the new staff, get familiar with our website. Policies are on our school district website. If you're intrigued by this and want to read into it more fully, that is available. All right. We have the motion, discussion, all in favor of the revision of Wellness Policy, number 533. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consortium membership agreement for the Adult Basic Education Consortium? This would be beginning July 1st through June 30th of next year. So, yeah, very good. Motion by Ms. Yee, is there a second?
Second.
I got Blaine. All right, so this is our yearly contract to do adult basic education services. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. Next is a programming contract that details with that for the adult best, adult basic education programming with Otter Tail County. Is there a motion to approve that?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? This is our contract, and it provides the services in the Otter Tail County Detention Facility. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. Is there a motion to approve the executive summary of the health and safety written plans? We'll entertain the motion first.
Some moved.
I'll second. All right, Blaine and Matt, good. And then just a highlight then, superintendent?
Yes, what this document does basically, I advise who's in charge of each health and safety program. So there's a two-page sheet. So if it's indoor air quality, that's my role, and it has Don Cass, it has our principals, it has a number of different people that are responsible for certain areas. So this is where staff can look at that, and they would understand where to go to in need. Yep.
All right, very good. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I mean, we have a motion to do a wage adjustment from $11.25 an hour for non-affiliated staff to $11.75 per hour. This would be effective for the 1718 school year. So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
I'll have you, Blaine, explain.
Because the non-affiliated are not belong to, do not belong to a specific group, such as custodians, secretaries, paria educators, there is no negotiation, negotiating on their behalf. And so therefore, we as, the U.S. School Board would need to approve any raise because they don't actually come to the school board as a group in order to receive a raise. So this is the kind of process that we're doing. And they're a bit behind the other groups because in the process of many of our budget-cutting scenarios, they were kind of left behind for a while, and so they're trying to catch up. And, well, I'm trying to get them a little bit more caught up to where they need to be with the rest of the groups.
Very good. Any other, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, and along the same vein, is there a motion for a wage adjustment for substitute staff positions? This would be for the next coming school year, where certified teacher substitutes would get $110 a day, or $55 for half a day, and then support staff substitutes from $11 an hour to $11.50 an hour. Is there a motion for that wage adjustment?
Some moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Yes, we, this last year, we increased slightly, and then we added the free lunch component. And we found that has been problematic to manage that whole lunch thing. So what we decided to do is let's just raise the salary a little bit more. And we're still on the low end for area schools for subs. Some school districts that are a little bit farther out actually pay mileage and lots of things, so we don't have to do that. But this is just recognizes that we appreciate their work, and we need subs. So if people are, if they have a college degree and are looking to substitute each, we contact the office, we'll help get you lined up with a short couple of sub-licenses because this is something that is needed very, very much. So this is just a recognition of, we appreciate them and need them basically every day.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, that's approved. We would look to add one full-time equivalent, special education paraprofessional. Is there a motion to add that position?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we added a student that needs a full-time one-on-one, and so that's why we are adding this particular position. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll entertain a discussion and take action in regard to an additional full-time equivalent kindergarten teacher. We'll begin with a motion for that.
Let's have discussion.
All right, very well. We'll start with the discussion then. We'll have Principal Colbeck give us the lay of the land on the increasing the lay of the land on the increasing enrollment numbers for kindergarten.
Sure, yeah, thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, currently, uh, as of today, this morning, uh, we have 188, uh, kindergarten students registered for school, and we know that, uh, our first day of kindergarten is 23 days away. Um, we started looking very closely at our data about six years ago, and what, what we do know is over the past six years, we have averaged 28 new kindergarten students registering from the end of May to the start of kindergarten. And, uh, if you look at where we were at the end of May, we were at 166, here we are at 188, so, we've grown 22, um, I think that we'll probably hit that average of growing to 28, if not maybe exceed that a little bit. Uh, the past couple of weeks, I've been spending a lot of time on the phone, making lots of phone calls to, uh, families on our, what we call the kindergarten census, I've been comparing notes with other schools, I've been on the phone with Battle Lake, Underwood, Rotse, Pelican Rapids, Morning Sun, and OLV, just looking over all of the kids on our list, and just trying to pare that down and know where kids are attending. Um, however, there's still over 20 kids, 25 kids on that list, would I say, unaccounted for. Uh, you know, you try to make contact, you, you call, um, number's been disconnected, or it's a number no longer in service, so we, you know, I think I have that list pared down as much as I can. Uh, I know that on that list still are some kids, about six or seven total, who either attended Head Start for Otter Preschool last year, who we have not heard from. I know that a week ago Friday, I believe, if I remember correctly, I think I had sent an email to Superintendent Ness, at that time mentioning we were at 183.
Yep.
So here we are, about nine, 10 days later, at 188. Um, the way it works, this works very nicely, when, when students, uh, when families register their kindergartner for school over the summer, they do that through the district office. The secretary in the district office has a Google document that they enter that new, uh, registration, uh, then I can immediately see that, because that's a shared document. Now, starting today, uh, here we are today, our elementary secretaries start back to work, so any new student that registers from this point forward will do that through the, um, through the McKinley office with our new secretary, Michelle. Um, so with 188 kindergartners right now, if school were to start today, we would have four sections of 23, and four sections of 24. Um, however, like I said, with 23 days left, um, of summer, so to speak, 23 days left before school starts, um, we will see that number continue to grow, and, um, of the 188 that are registered, 15 of them are Monday, Wednesday, Friday, eight of them are morning only, that means 165 are the all-day, everyday group, uh, so, I mean, just as an aside, what I do with those 15 Monday, Wednesday, Friday, probably put about three of them in, into five different classrooms, and then our morning only kids get split up amongst three classrooms, maybe three, three, and two. So I think the, just as a recap, um, we're at 188, we have 23 days left before we start, um, and, uh, I think the number will continue to, to grow.
So for the kids that just enroll in, like, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or just morning, do they ever roll into full day?
Most of them end up doing that.
I was...
In fact, many of these, um, 23 kids will end up as an all-day, everyday student before the first day of school.
Okay.
What will happen sometimes is, maybe a parent shows up and meets with the kindergarten teacher on her day of orientation, and learns that, oh, my child is only one of three kids in this classroom that will be coming on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and so they make the change often quicker.
And the kids put pressure on the parents, "I wanna be here all day." We, we have sort of an unofficial guideline, we don't have, uh, you know, here's the numbers we're hard at core at, but, you know, the 22 to 24 numbers where we try to keep kindergarten, and then it sort of creeps up in the elementary from there, so that's, um...
Just as a reminder, um, or as a review, uh, two years ago, two years ago, we had nine kindergarten teachers at McKinley, um, and when we started school, we had 197 kindergartners. That's now our second grade class, of course, but, uh, so, two years ago, we had nine sections at McKinley, last year we had eight. Um, most years, it seems like we've had eight teachers over there.
What's an average in the area of number of kindergartners per class? I know last year, I think they had 17 in each class in Pelican Rapids.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not sure, um, you know, some of these area schools that we visit with are one-section, um, school districts, so, one year they might have 15, and another year they might have 24, and then when they get to 24, they have to decide, do we have one section of 24, or two sections of 12?
23 is a lot of kindergartners, even.
Yeah, and, and if we get four new ones between now and the first day of school, then all eight teachers would have 24. Again, um, if there's 20 to 25 on that list that are unaccounted for, certainly I'm not suggesting that we're gonna get 20 to 25 new registrations between now and the first day of school, but there's, uh, there's definitely the potential to continue to grow over the next 23 days.
All right. With, with that kind of background, now I'll ask for, uh, a motion to add one additional full-time equivalent kindergarten teacher. Is there someone that will make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Board discussion?
I think it's a good problem to have. And I'm glad we have it.
And we have approval.
Yes.
Scott, you feel confident you'd be able to find somebody? I mean, at this late in the stage, teacher's still out there?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
I should also add that I, I will not need to add any additional music, or if I had time, I have the people there, I can make that work in their schedule. Um, so, we have a schedule ready to go, um, if we have an eight, eight section, or it's really a 10 section or an 11 section building when you count in the two first grade classrooms over there.
Furniture, computer, blah, blah.
Yeah, we're gonna have a little work to do there.
And, support staff, parents, and all that, we should be pretty good there, huh?
Yeah, I, I don't see, um, yeah, I, I think we're fine on that, in that area.
All right. Good. Anything else? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we got a kindergarten teacher, whoop, whoop. I mean, potentially, um, all right.
So we, we do anticipate by August 28th, uh, we'll have someone onboard, and you will approve the actual person, so right now you approved the position, uh, will be, Elaine's probably already got it posted.
I'm getting ready to...
Exactly, she's got her computer app, it's probably posted already, and, uh, so we'll move forward that rather rapidly, it'll be open till filled, and, uh, there'll be a number of people that'll be contacting Mr. Colback shortly.
Great. Fantastic.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then we'll, um, start with discussion then, with the full-time equivalent, um, .0828, so less than one, one position on the ALC, art teacher position, and so, Principal Monkey, can you tell us about this proposal?
Sure. Um, a number of years ago, we used to, uh, send an art teacher to the ALC, um, of course, they're like any other high school students, they have a fine arts requirement that they need to meet over there with, uh, a couple different, uh, semester classes, so it becomes difficult over there unless they have the opportunity to transition back here, just because of the number of things that we can offer with our staff on site there at Roosevelt. Um, so, um, they're, they're looking to try something a little unique here, in that they wanna offer, and, uh, basically it's a Friday afternoon class, and they're gonna chunk, block the time, um, and then provide some parrot time during the course of the week, to have some of these students that are, that are able to take on, you know, a little bit of an additional load, um, to be able to get this, so they'd have a art teacher on Friday afternoons for about two and a half hours, and then they would work the rest of the week independently with, uh, some parrot time or after-school time in order to, uh, do the projects and meet the curriculum. And it would be a basic Art I class, um, and this has been run by, uh, both Kerry Thompson and Peter Budenoff in the art department, uh, and they're both, uh, in approval, uh, it's, it's not a new curriculum for us, it would simply be, uh, a regular Art I class, delivered a little bit over there in a chunk kind of block type, type of format. Um, so this would just provide the students, if they, if they weren't musical, uh, then all of a sudden you get down to those, you know, very few options over there unless they transition back over here, uh, for one of the classes that we offer here, and for many of our students are not very successful, uh, trying that transition back and forth. Um, so, it seems like, uh, and we have the person, uh, interested that would be, uh, filling this very part-time position, um, for us as well, so, uh, I would recommend, it's a, it's a good idea to be able to deliver this different course over there at the ALC.
So the .0828 FTE, there's a, it's a $3,430 cost to the district, there would be, it's because it's so part-time, there's, there's not benefits and health insurance and all of that, so it'd be basically a strict salary, um, position.
And that, and that would fund for both semesters.
Yep, that's a full year, that's a full year.
First semester and the second semester course.
Dean, would, so, would Patrick be kind of assisting with this then, or helping with it somewhat, or?
Would only in a, in a mentoring situation.
Okay.
Basically, for this, we, we have a local candidate that would be interested, and has worked for the district in the past as well.
Was this intended to be a one-twelfth position?
Uh, that, just because of how we're delivering it hourly...
Okay.
Then, it's a lot less...
That's why we're...
Right, right, because it really becomes a lot less direct instructional, uh, time, but more assignments outside of the scope of that, so...
And there is some prep time built into that.
Yep.
That .0828 as well.
Well, it's just, a one-twelfth would be .0833, so I was wondering what happened.
Darn close, yep.
Darn close. We did an hourly type situation along with the prep time to get pretty exact...
Okay.
...with what we were paying for.
Four decimal points.
And, um, uh, pretty...
This'll be a scant number of students that are gonna receive the service, probably, huh?
Probably, you know, it, you know, we have class sizes of 16 over there, I would doubt if we can find 16 students, at least initially, to take this offering, you know, I would think we'd be looking at half of this, and let's see if we can get successful with those students and kind of build the idea from there.
All right.
Uh, 'cause it is gonna take a commitment on, on the student's part in order to, to follow through and complete some of these projects without a teacher present 100% of the time, so it's, it's a good pilot program for us, a good to try.
Yeah, I was just thinking, this is something we might wanna monitor.
Now, is there a minimum number of students that have to take this? I mean, we're not gonna do it for just one student or something, right?
No, and, and they, and like I say, that every student over there needs this fine arts requirement.
Okay.
So it's not like we don't have enough, we can pick from, and it, and it is open nine through 12, or 12-plus as well.
Okay.
So, any age over there would be, would have this option, uh, which, which is kind of nice, it's not just a particular junior class, which is...
On the computer-based one, are we paying a fee for that when they take it online? Is that kinda how that works, or how's that, and the notes is talking about?
Oh, yeah, they could, they could, well, they could take it like through IQ Academy as an example.
Okay.
So then, you know, we would be...
Yep.
...indirectly paying for that.
Okay.
All right. Did we do a motion?
No.
All right. Would someone offer the motion to add a .0828 full-time equivalent art teacher for the ALC?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, that's that approved, and, then that will conclude our agenda for today's meeting, our next regular meeting's gonna be at 7:15 on Monday, August 28th, that's our last early morning meeting for the season, and that will be here at the Honor Community Room. Um, we will stick around and talk about the start of the school year in more detail, review that test data with a little bit more, uh, informational basis, and then, um, after that, a meeting with the negotiations committee. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we are adjourned, thank you.